Good afternoon. My name is Robert Moreno and I’m acting Vice President of Government and Community Relations at the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, New York City Transit. I will preside over tonight’s public meeting. I am joined on the dais by my colleague Peter Caffiero, to my left, who’s the—my far-left, who’s the chief—New York City Transit’s Chief of Operations Planning. To my immediate left is Lou Aliva. He’s the MTA’s Deputy General Counsel for Environmental. And to my right is my colleague from New York City DOT, Eric Beaton, Deputy Commissioner of the New York City Department of Transportation. We are here today to receive comments on the supplemental environmental assessment and Section 4-F review for the Canarsie Tunnel project. The official public review period for the SCA began on July 20, 2018, and it ends on August 19, 2018. The SCA and the 4-F review were—was prepared by the Federal Transit Administration and the MTA, New York City Transit. The proposed project will require full-time, double-track closure of the Canarsie Tunnel under the East River between Manhattan and Brooklyn for 15 months to fully repair damage caused by Hurricane Sandy. The MTA has developed a proposed alternative service plan to provide temporary transportation alternatives to the L subway line rail service during the tunnel closure. The proposed alternative service plan includes temporary bus, ferry, bicycle, pedestrian, and subway service enhancements. The SCA and Section 4-F review presents analysis of the potential impacts of the Canarsie Tunnel alternative service plan. The SCA and Section 4-F review was prepared in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, of 1969, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, Section 4-F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of 1966, and all applicable regulations, including Council on Environmental Quality regulations at 40 CFR 1506.6, FTA regulations under 23 CFR 771.119 subsection D, Executive Order 12898—no, I’m sorry, Executive Order 12898 on environmental justice, Executive Order 11988 on floodplain management, and U.S. DOT Order 5650.2 on floodplain management and protection. In addition to tonight’s meeting, the public can also submit comments in writing via MTA’s website or mail them to the MTA or FTA’s offices. Mailed comments must be postmarked by August 19, 2018. Following the close of the comment period, FTA will review the comments and responses and make a formal NIPA determination for the project. Public comments postmarked by August 19, 2018 will be made part of the SCA record and reflected in the FTA’s final NIPA determination. For the record, the date is Monday, August 6. The time is now 5:06 PM, and the hearing site is 2 Broadway, 20th floor, New York, New York. Before we begin, I’d like to briefly explain the procedures for tonight’s public meeting. First, I will call the names of people who registered to speak in the order they signed in. If you wish to speak tonight and have not registered yet, please fill out a registration form at the table immediately outside of the auditorium. For those who have pre-registered to speak today, either via telephone or on our website, we ask that you also sign in at the registration table. I will be calling out your names, one speaker at a time. When your name is called, please come to the podium. When you begin your comments, please state your name and affiliation for the record so that we may hear from all interested parties today. Your remarks shall not exceed three minutes. If you run out of time, you may submit written comments to supplement your oral testimony. This meeting is accessible to people who are mobility impaired. Sign language services available as well as Mandarin, Cantonese, and Spanish language translations. We will now begin to hear from members of the public who have registered to speak. The first registered speaker is Judith Pensen. Ms. Pensen will be followed by Paul Granicki. Hello, Ms. Pensen.
Hello. My name is Judy Pessen. I am a resident of West 13th Street, and I’m on the Steering Committee of the 14th Street Coalition. The Coalition is a group of concerned residents, organizations, and businesses formed in response to the MTA/DOT proposed plans for the L train repairs. We know the repairs are necessary, and we want them to be done. The proposed alternative service plan was designed solely to serve the L train ridership, as clearly stated in the first sentence of the SCA. The mission statement of 14th Street Coalition is to promote a balanced solution that takes into account the needs, safety, and well-being of all impacted residents, businesses, and commuters. The commuters will pass through our residents, our neighborhoods, twice a day. We will be impacted 24/7 for far longer than their projected 15 months. The SCA repeats our words no fewer than 10 times, saying that the ASP is balanced against the needs of the residents. Saying is not the same as doing. The MTA is paying lip service to us without addressing any of the residents’ concerns regarding pollution, safety congestion, access for emergency vehicles, and the impact of diverted vehicles, especially trucks, onto neighboring side streets from the Village to Flatiron and to the neighborhoods surrounding the Williamsburg Bridge. The major flaw with the SCA, as I see it, and a flaw that negates the entire assessment, is that it is based on only two options: no action or the MTA-proposed action. For the past seven months, we have asked for alternative solutions that address our concerns. None are considered here. The 14th Street Coalition has presented alternatives to the New York City Council and the impacted Manhattan community boards. The MTA has been in attendance at many of these sessions, so they are aware of our recommendations. Community Board Two and Community Board Five have included our recommendations in their proposal, believing that they have merit, yet the MTA/DOT has not deigned to consider them. Furthermore, the MTA recently announced their intention to implement their ill-conceived plans for the 14th Street busway in January, significantly impeding the daily activities of residents and businesses a full three months before a single commuter is displaced. We agree that limited test runs of the plans are warranted and desirable, but see the full-blown launch as a punishing action while the L train is still in service. This further highlights the disregard and disrespect of the concerns of impacted neighborhoods. So much for balance. I will not touch on specific issues with the ASP, as others speaking today will likely address all of the pertinent concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pensen. The next speaker is Paul Granicki. He will be followed by Georgie Michelle.
My name is Paul Granicki. I’m a resident of West 16th Street. I’m president of the 100 West 16th Street Block Association. While we are appreciative of the efforts being done to repair the Canarsie Tunnel and understand the necessity for doing that, our concern is the mitigation plan and the traffic that’s going to be brought to the side streets in our neighborhood, which already suffer from undue traffic. We are—many of these streets are residential, this one in particular, where they know through truck signs, which are violated continually by traffic already. As 14th Street is shut down, there’s going to be more trucks and traffic on the side streets. The only solution we’re being offered is that there will be enforcement, which we have no faith in since there has been no enforcement for the past decade while we have suffered truck traffic on our side streets. So to have faith in enforcement going forward is—seems to us useless. And when we look at 14th Street and we hear that all—you know, some cars will be allowed if they—if they have access to the— if they have to go to garages, they’ll be able to make right turns, they’ll be able to be—some delivery vehicles. All this involves some kind of enforcement, and we don’t—and we just don’t comprehend how any of this is going to work. Just allowing buses, and lots of buses—there are lots of buses on 14th Street, not just MTA buses. There are tourist buses, there are university buses. We don’t see any of this accounted for in the MTA plans. We need—we need people on the ground who know the neighborhoods, talking to the MTA, the MTA listening to the things that we’re talking about, what’s happening on our blocks, not looking at numbers and looking at ridership alone. Look at what’s happening on the streets. They were going to close LaGuardia Place before they realized, “Oh, there’s people who live there. We can’t close LaGuardia Place.” Nobody had even looked. We’re concerned about the rest of the blocks, and nobody’s looked at the rest of the blocks as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Granicki. The next speaker is Georgie Michelle, who will be followed by Tommy Loeb, it looks like.
Good afternoon. My name is Georgie Michelle, and I live on 14th Street, and I’ve lived on 14th Street since 1972. I—all I hear about is how the people who take the L train are disrupted. I want to know what you’re doing about the 344,954 residents who live all across 14th Street. Why are we being displaced because of a train or a tunnel? Also, I see nothing that you’ve done for the disabled. I am totally disabled. My food comes from Fresh Direct. I get car service to where I’m going, and I pay for it. I don’t use excess because it doesn’t work well. And I don’t go out. This is the first time I’ve been out in eight days. So I want to know what you’re going to do for me. I can’t—I won’t be able to get food, I won’t be able to go to doctors, and I have a car that has handicap parking. It’s on 14th Street. What do I do with it? This is absolutely a plan that I think is smoking opium, to say, “We’re going to take everything, and we’re just going to give 14th Street buses, and everybody else can go to hell.” Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tommy Loeb. Mr. Loeb will be followed by Assemblymember Deborah Glick.
My name is Tommy Loeb. I live on Grand Street and the FDR Drive, and I’m here representing myself and the Grand Street Democrats. We all accept our responsibility for what is happening with the L train and the need to do the repairs. However, we can’t have our own communities be sacrificed and be made intolerable in order to accommodate other communities. We need to share that responsibility. We are already impacted by impossible traffic. We’re an on-ramp to the Williamsburg Bridge. DOT has already recognized and has been studying the corner of Clinton and Grand now for years. They promised a fix, but that’s the main access to the bridge. They have given us numbers that say 75% of the cars that access the bridge from the FDR Drive use Grand Street. We have four major construction projects slated for Grand Street and Delancey Street. Essex Crossing has two major buildings, and the Grand Street Guild and the Chinatown Planning Council also have buildings planned for Clinton, Grand, Broome, the whole area. You can’t drive more cars there and have no plan for HOV3—uh, uh, non-HOV3 cars. We’ve been told that there are 2,500 cars an hour during rush hour that have to—will have to be diverted from the Williamsburg Bridge. That will not be HOV3-eligible. When asked at the MTA hearing with Mr. Blyford and Commissioner Trottenberg, the NYPD responded that they had no plan for either enforcement of HOV3 or when cars are not HOV3-eligible, where those cars are going to be sent and how they’re going to access existing bridges or tunnels. The other part of the plan, which is impossible, is 70 buses—70 diesel buses an hour coming over the Williamsburg Bridge. We have thousands of people who live on either side of the Williamsburg Bridge in Manhattan, including a school, PS 110. I’ve done a little calculation, and by my numbers, the—it’ll be 2,500 round trips per day by diesel bus, and that will amount to over 1 million diesel bus trips during the L train shutdown. We have gotten no information about how the diesel fumes, how the diesel buses are going to impact our air quality. How can you possibly put a plan into effect that doesn’t even tell the residents what is going to be the impact on our air quality? We have people who suffer from emphysema, from asthma. On a day like today, we need to keep windows open at some of the apartments. There’s no central air conditioning. There’s not—everybody has air conditioning. So you folks have to come up with a plan which does not—which works for the people in Brooklyn and also works for the people in Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. The next speaker is Assemblywoman Deborah Glick. Ms. Assemblywoman Glick will be followed by Liam Jeffries.
I submitted this in writing, so—because it’s a little lengthy, I will try to give you the high points. Obviously, we understand the necessity of closing the tunnel in order to affect the repairs, but it will be extremely difficult for all New Yorkers, even those who were using the L line and those who just live adjacent to the line. I’m concerned that the MTA and New York City Transit are underestimating the number of riders who will be using subways—the alternative subways—and making multiple transfers in lieu of their typical ride on the L train. Table ES-1 in the proposed Action for Transportation Impacts indicates that the MTA’s own modeling predicts a 20% reduction in demand on adjacent subway lines in Brooklyn and Manhattan. And I—while I understand that the improvements of the G line and hopefully completion of the communication-based train control system on the L—rather, on the 7—will improve service, it seems that many on the 2, 3, 4, 5, N, Q, W, F, J, M, and Z will experience some increase in typical service and not a 20% reduction. I’m pleased that the—to see improvements on the G and M line will include some permanent improvements like more turnstiles and opening previously closed exits. However, I feel the MTA should approach this mitigation plan with the assumption that the subways will continue to see increased ridership in the future, assuming that the emergency repair program and further upgrades improve service reliability. Right now, people are fleeing the trains. I’m pleased that the ASP no longer includes a two-way bike lane on 13th Street, which ran counter to all common sense for a small residential one-way street. And while one-way bike lanes on 12th and 13th will still raise concerns over the behavior of many cyclists and the narrow nature of the side streets in this congested area. This does represent some compromise in the plan, but the problem will result in having more pedestrian and bicycle conflict. During the construction of the bike lane, it’s important to ensure that other ancillary projects that have been happening in lower Manhattan be completed. Con Edison, Verizon have been working on many side streets in Greenwich Village and East Village, tearing up a street for extended period of time. And compounded with increased traffic in—from diversions on 14th Street, busing from the new 14 select bus and other factors can increase impacts to residents on 12th and 13th. And while there is some information in the SCA regarding the 14th Street introduction of the new SBS, closure to private cars, and other changes to increase ability of MTA to shuttle people along 14th Street, there’s much less information about plans for the neighborhoods south of Houston Street. The new L 1, 2, 3, 4 bus routes will carry people over Delancey Street and the bus loops on First and Second Avenue. This congestion, as has been mentioned, is an enormous amount of bus traffic, and we have no commitment to have air quality monitoring. There was a—
Assemblywoman, please summarize your remarks.
Yes. I will say that the other thing that must be done is that there are many construction projects, and there is no clarity as to whether or not agencies will work with each other around Beth Israel, the Department of Buildings, and the NYPD and private developers in order to ensure that the area that is currently planned for the impact will not have additional construction during this period.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker is Liam Jeffries, who will be followed by Juliana Bond.
My name is Liam Jeffries, and I speak as a lifelong New Yorker and subway rider who is concerned about the ramifications of the L train shutdown. I will admit that when the MTA announced their plan to manage the shutdown, I was slightly skeptical. But after the reading—but after reading the environmental assessment, I’m more in support of the MTA’s plans than ever before. The report backs up the repeated assertions that the shutdown plan would not only adequately address the effects of the subway closure, but also reduce the shutdown’s environmental impact. In addition, the shutdown plans have the potential to drastically improve the lives and commutes of those of those on 14th Street and beyond. The busway in particular has the potential to finally give a majority of people on 14th Street, transit and sidewalk users, priority over cars, a distinct minority of total traffic on the street. In addition, it is important that a full L tunnel closure be done as soon as possible. Let us all remember that the reason this project exists is because of a major hurricane that developed in only a week, and I hesitate to think of what would happen if, God forbid, a storm equal to or worse than Sandy were to hit in the future without warning. So in conclusion, this plan is one that would reduce the project’s environmental impact, a project that has the potential to dramatically improve the commutes of millions of New Yorkers, and one that must be done soon, God forbid, if a worst storm were to hit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Juliana Bond. Followed by Lawrence Schoyer.
Hi. My name is Juliana Bond. I live on West 13th Street, and I am co-chair of the 14th Street Coalition. We all acknowledge that the Canarsie Tunnel needs to be repaired. However, despite having had almost six years since Hurricane Sandy damaged the tunnel to come up with a plan for its repair, the MTA and DOT have failed completely to come up with a temporary alternative plan that strikes a balance between the potential needs of displaced commuters and the inherent needs of local businesses and residential communities within the 14th Street corridor and surrounding downtown neighborhoods. Today, we’re talking about the supplemental environmental assessment, which despite community feedback and viable alternative proposals made to them by the 14th Street Coalition, gives us only two alternatives: their extreme plan or do nothing. To say that the SCA falls far short of what it should be is a gross understatement. Their traffic data, it turns out, is not data, but some sort of modeling. There has been no real analysis of actual traffic, no count of the number of cars on various streets, no count of trucks, no count of trucks on side streets, no analysis of impact on 11th Street, 17th Street, 18th Street, 19th Street, and 20th Streets. The lack of real traffic data makes the conclusion that there is no increased pollution, no increase in noise, and no increase in vibrations baseless. The lack of real traffic data causes a safety problem that is not discussed, major response delays for ambulances and fire trucks. In short, it seems that the SCA is based, at best, on sketchy modeling and perhaps guessing. This SCA is yet another example of the MTA and DOT’s disregard for our community and total lack of interest in regarding our concerns about the impact of their plans on our quality of life.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lawrence Schoyer. Mr. Schoyer will be followed by Assemblymember Epstein. Mr. Schoyer.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Scheyer. I’m an attorney-at-law and resident of Stavison Town, a member of Community Board Six, Transportation Committee, but I speak tonight on my own behalf. I also used to work for Port Authority, which has a lot of experience in moving large quantities of buses without interruption, which is hopefully what the MTA and New York City Transit can accomplish here. My full remarks are submitted online, but I will try to highlight a few points of special interest since this SCA was put out. In particular, I call your attention to figure D-3, which shows the location of bus stops in and around the Union Square area. The president of MTA and Commissioner Trottenberg visited this area along with other elected officials this morning, and they saw what some of the problems are and what will be encountered. And that is that this street—14th Street—has to be kept open for buses, and the exceptions that are being considered at the present time for interlopers such as Ubers and Lifts are going to have to be rethought. In addition to that, there has been an elimination of M14A and M14D local bus stops while there’s been an overlay of M14 SBS express service. It’s like a subway trunk line with local and express stops. There should be free transfers among them, and so that people who are coming from a greater distance from the Far East, like where I’m at, can quickly skip over certain stops, but then go to local stops to get where they need to go. And in particular, most people need to go to places in and around Union Square. And for that reason alone, existing local bus stops need to be maintained. You could have, for example, in front of the Whole Foods on the south side of Union Square South, a combination local and SBS station and extend the sidewalk into the street if need be, but at the same time, you have to eliminate sidewalk obstructions such as motorcycles parked on sidewalks and people who have created their own businesses with stalls built out of shipping or shopping crates. So we need these changes at 14th Street. I’ve been living with the problems since July of last year on the East End, and it’s really, really important that the buses are able to move and move all the people who need to move.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Assemblyman Harvey Epstein, who will be followed by Robin Goldberg. Assemblyman.
Good afternoon. My name is Harvey Epstein. I’m the Assemblymember in the 74th Assembly District, which includes the neighborhoods of Low Reside, East Village, Stavison, Peter Cooper Village, Murray Hill, Tudor City, and the United Nations. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today about the supplemental environmental assessment. I know we don’t have a long time to speak, and the proposed impact will have on my community and communities all over the city. Some of the concerns I have as to where we are today, the SCA does not project the increase in carbon monoxide and harmful particulate matters that are going to be released due to congestion and increased bus traffic. We’re on the bus this morning, trying to do a survey, and it’s clear to me with the volume of buses we’re talking about, it’s going to have some serious consequences. And with only 15 clean electric buses in the—in the mix, it’s—there’s a real concern about the risk for people in my community and all over the city. I think we need to have more information about what that will be. We’ll need to have more ongoing testing throughout the process to ensure when we’re talking about increased particulate matter and the impact that would have, we need to have really good data. I hope to work with your office to make sure that happens. And the traffic on 14th Street, and you know, I think we—as we saw today, that the flow traffic is going to really be problematic, especially from Third Avenue to Avenue C. I think the plans that we have to keep it open to all vehicle traffic is going to slow things down tremendously. The turn lane on First Avenue and Third Avenue is going to really be a problem for the flow, and it’s going to create much more of a hazard and going to increase the amount of congestion and pollution it’s going to be putting in our community. I really want to work with you to think about a better solution to avoid those negative impacts. Construction, as—again, as we saw today, there’s so much—there’s so much construction on 14th Street. I know the MTA and DOTs talk about trying to ensure that construction projects aren’t going to be happening during the time of closure. It’s—it’s pretty obvious that the construction that we saw that was going on is going to—a lot of it’s going to be continuing to go on while the L train is closed, and how that’s going to be able to allow buses to go through the—through this community is going to be a question. I want to echo what my colleague Deborah Glick said around more information, more collaboration. We’re talking about more community engagement. I appreciate you being here today and having opportunities to speak to the community. I hope we’ll do more of that in our community on the East Side to really hear back—feedback from residents. I know the plan is solidifying in some ways, but I hope there’s more opportunities to tinker with it, knowing that places like 14th and First is going to be a mess. It’s going to be a mess because there are going to be so many buses going up First Avenue and stopping at 15th and First. It’s going to be a mess because there are going to be so many buses going across 14th Street. There are going to be people who will be turning up First Avenue, and there’s going to be an increased volume of pedestrians all over the place. So I don’t think we have the solutions right now, but I think we’re going to need to come up with better solutions to be able to make this a viable plan that we can all get behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Epstein. Thank you, Assemblymember Epstein.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robin Goldberg, who will be followed by Marna Lawrence.
Hi, my name's Robin Goldberg, an eight-year member of Community Board Two. However, I'm really here in unison with the Kenmare Little Italy Loop Coalition. Living on Broome Street between Mott and Mulberry, one block south of Kenmare for over forty years, within that forty years, there's never been a solution to any traffic problems. So that's just in spite of what's going to be happening in April of 2019. And I find it absolutely horrifying that no one in my neighborhood even knew that a study was being conducted and what kind of study actually was conducted. Because even to this day, when I put out emails to a lot of different neighbors, no one even knew that, first of all, this meeting was going on or that there are any plans in place. And I think that it's really disturbing that, six years post-Sandy, there really is no definite plan at this point, that you're still accepting community input and trying to really come up with a plan that would really be most agreeable to residents who keep talking about the environmental impact and traffic. Someone who lives in Little Italy, I don't know if the MTA or the DOT is familiar with the fact that for over twenty weekends a year, the corridor of Mulberry Street between Canal and Broome Street are closed. So on any given day, like today, tomorrow, the weekend, twenty-four-seven, there is always traffic, there are always issues. So if there's going to be a bus route down Kenmare Street during the Little Italy-Mulberry Mall plus the San Gennaro Feast, which is a nightmare anyway, I can't imagine what it's going to be like with this plan in place. A member of our community, I think, came up with an incredibly sensible alternative plan that I know has been submitted, and I hope that you will look at that closely. But I also would suggest, and echo someone else who is talking here, that there really should be outreach to members of the community who could collaborate and effectively come up with solutions or come up or to just talk about the daily ongoings particularly of Kenmare Street. That's what I'm representing. A lot of people here are talking about Fourteenth Street. It's obviously going to be a total mess, but we're hoping that we could come together and negotiate a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marna Lawrence, who will be followed by Matthew Robinson.
My name is Marna Lawrence. I live at Nineteen Cleveland Place, right around the corner from Kenmare Street, where a fleet of diesel-fueled buses will be turning onto Narrow Cleveland Place directly in front of residential buildings and across from a city park at intervals of almost one bus a minute. I belong to the Kenmare Little Italy Loop Coalition, a group of very concerned residents and business owners from around Little Italy and Soho who will be severely impacted by the onslaught of eighty shuttle buses coming across the Williamsburg Bridge, forty-eight of which will proceed into our already severely congested neighborhoods during peak hours. We join together because while the Williamsburg Bridge L two and L three shuttle buses are a significant part of the overall L train shutdown mitigation plan, there was little, as was just said, to no outreach from the DOT or MTA to our area. Most of the focus has been on the Fourteenth Street area. That is until we reached out to them, to the DOT specifically, this past March. Additionally, the DOT and MTA continue to exclude our area from studies such as the most recent supplemental environmental assessment. While the DOT and MTA have been willing to meet with our coalition two times since March, we unfortunately continue to have the same concerns and continue to wait for detailed answers to our questions. So here are a few of the urgent concerns and questions we continue to have. Number one, why do the MTA and the DOT make so little effort to reach out to the communities in and around the Kenmare Street Little Italy Loop? Except for May and July meetings, we, with our coalition, we have been ignored. Community Board Two meetings have focused primarily on Fourteenth Street neighborhoods. Two, why do you refuse to include our Kenmare Little Italy Soho area in an environmental impact study? You say that you are not legally required to do so, but that does not answer as to why you refuse to do one. Surely you understand that the impact of so many diesel-powered buses on our small downtown congested streets poses a very serious health issue, especially when you consider the infamous traffic jams which occur at Kenmare Street during rush hour, when vehicular traffic is at a virtual standstill. Three, why does the MTA and DOT refuse to implement alternative bus routes to share the pain? We have submitted what we think is a much wiser plan for at least some of the buses, including Allen Street. This was just referred to. Michelle Campo, another member of our coalition, will review this in detail. Four, why is the MTA and DOT determined to do a layover at the tiny and antiquated Spring Street Station when there is access to the Number Six train two blocks north at the much larger Broadway Lafayette Station? There's hardly any sidewalk around that station. There are already too many pedestrians trying to maneuver around the station, which makes it dangerous pedestrians who oftentimes walk into the street to avoid the crowds. Five, why do you and the DOT refuse to consider adding HOB three lanes on other East River crossings? Now, before it's too late, not after. Six, it is still unclear as to how the HOB three lanes will be enforced. Finally, I would like to address two suggestions made by the DOT at our last meeting on July tenth, at which there were MTA representatives. The DOT showed us a video of a bus turning right onto Cleveland Place. However, Cleveland Place was completely clear in that video of any other automobiles and buses. It was a biased and inaccurate depiction of the reality of the corner. The DOT/MTA also offered a fourth bus route, the L four, which they said would decrease the shuttle buses to Cleveland Place by, I believe, was thirteen percent. This is the equivalent of siphoning off a pond in the midst of a tsunami. I plead with our city agencies, which are responsible for the health and safety of all of our citizens, to please listen to our concerns and act upon them in a fair and competent manner, and this includes the Kenmare Little Italy Loop area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lawrence. The next speaker is Matthew Robinson, who will be followed by David Leeds.
Okay, basically, I'm going to be talking about the presentation that you've done that are forty-nine pages. Looking at a lot of the documents, there are many sections or cross-sections where you're... Oh, I'm sorry. There are cross-sections where it's showing the width of the cars and the width of the buses and the other vehicles on the streets. They're all out of scale, so that if you look at the diagrams, you'll see that the car width is the same as the bus width, and that's not true. Also, your bus lanes, your buses are either eight foot six wide or ten foot six wide. On some of the narrow streets, you should only use the eight foot six wide buses, not the ten foot six wide buses. In scale, the cars are six foot two, the buses are six foot two, and again, that's dramatically different. So where you're looking at the diagrams as if they're showing you a lot of leeway, a lot of elbow room, there isn't. When you're looking at the loops on Fourteenth Street, both east and west, both of those diagrams are false and cannot be done. The turning radius of a bus is forty-four feet. When you're doing a full loop, that means it's eighty-eight feet, and there's nowhere where there's a turning radius where you're able to do that. What you're looking at, literally, is the turning radius that you have on the west side, as if you could barely do it if you were a car. So I would plead that the direction which that traffic is suggested, both east and west, should be reexamined. Also, when you look on the east side, by Stuyvesant Town, you will see that there's the Stuyvesant Cove. The Stuyvesant Cove Park will have to be modified, maybe even obliterated, by the plan because you have to transgress across the park, across the running track, and across the just walking path, and there's no space for it. Also, none of your diagrams really show the standing of buses. So when you get thirty buses coming across and then coming back, there's standing areas where there are buses that have to... that are pending their route or pending scheduling, and it's not being shown. In addition to that, on Union Square, there's a lot of things that you could do immediately to show immediate impact. One, outside of the Duane Reade, there are private bicycle racks that actually could be removed completely, and there are also some trucks that could be removed immediately that will show you what the promise is of that area. I think, for the most part, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is David Leeds, who will be followed by Joanne Schindleheim.
Hello, my name is David Leeds, and I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Carolyn B. Maloney, presenting her office's testimony this evening. With approximately four hundred thousand riders per day, more than half of whom commute between Brooklyn and Manhattan, the L train is one of the most important elements of New York's public transit system. The closure of the Canarsie Tunnel for the repairs needed in the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy, while necessary, will cause a major disruption to our city's transit ecosystem. Accordingly, it is incumbent upon the MTA and New York City Transit to adopt a bold and innovative alternative service plan that will serve displaced commuters and adequately handle the volume of new pedestrian and vehicular traffic in Williamsburg and Lower Manhattan. My staff and I have been working closely with the MTA, the Department of Transportation, the L Train Coalition, the Fourteenth Street Coalition, and several other community groups to devise the most efficient way to mitigate the shutdown's disruptive effects. I am pleased to note that the ASP detailed in the supplemental environmental assessment has incorporated several of the suggestions that I and members of the community have made during these productive discussions. I would like to thank the MTA for listening to New Yorkers and modifying their plans accordingly, as they should continue to do so going forward. First, I appreciate that the MTA has increased the number of shuttle bus routes between Bedford Avenue and Fourteenth Street from three to four. The MTA has told us that roughly twenty-eight percent of L train riders end their commute on Fourteenth Street, and to be successful, the temporary shuttle service should take commuters to the places where a significant number need to go. Additionally, I'm glad the MTA has recently announced that, as part of the L train station repairs that will occur during the shutdown, the Sixth Avenue station will be made ADA accessible through the addition of four new elevators. This will not only allow disabled riders easier access to the L train, but also connections to the F, M, one, two, and three lines and to the PATH train. The MTA should continue investing in upgrading subway stations to make them all ADA compliant, and this is a step in the right direction. I wish the MTA would take advantage of the shutdown and make more of these stations ADA accessible. New York has been woefully lax in upgrading its stations, and I am encouraged by NYCT Chair Andy Byford's commitment to accelerating the pace of making stations ADA accessible. Further, I believe that there are several important steps that the MTA could take to improve the ASP and prepare more efficiently and effectively for the impending L train shutdown. One component of the ASP where I would suggest some modifications is the plan for increased shuttle bus service. Specifically, I believe that there should be shuttle buses between Bedford Avenue and adjacent subway lines. Accordingly, there should be a bus between Bedford Avenue and the G train stop at Nassau Street, and another bus between Bedford Avenue and the J M Z stop at Marcy Avenue. Furthermore, I understand that the MTA plans to add about two hundred buses as part of this ASP, but that only fifteen of these will be all-electric buses, or AEBs. Air pollution is a major concern for the residents of North Brooklyn and Lower Manhattan, whose neighborhoods are about to see significant traffic increases. I encourage the MTA to increase the number of AEBs that will be included in the two-hundred bus fleet responsible for shuttling displaced L train riders. I'm also concerned about the proposed ferry service's ability to keep up with displaced commuters' demands. The MTA has told us that it will run eight ferries an hour in each direction, allowing it to accommodate one thousand one hundred ninety-two people an hour in each direction. I'll wrap up very quickly. Anyway, my concern is that during the rush hours, more than twelve hundred people will opt to use the ferries, and that more ferry service will be required at rush hour. Additionally, there should be a shuttle bus between Bedford Avenue and the ferry to make it easier for people to reach the ferry. Thank you very much for pursuing bold ideas, for allowing me to speak tonight, and again, I urge the MTA to continue engaging with the community to create the most effective and balanced ASP possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leeds. The next speaker is Joanne Schindleheim, who will be followed by Michelle Campo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joanne Schindleheim, and I have lived on Fifteenth Street for twenty-five years. I love where I live, I love the diversity of the area, I love the character of the area. The neighborhoods that will be impacted by the MTA/DOT plan include many older buildings erected in the nineteenth and twentieth centuries. With traffic curtailed on Fourteenth Street, the MTA/DOT forecasts a seventy percent increase in traffic on side streets like Fifteenth Street, especially heavy truck traffic. Of major concern to me and my neighbors is the potentially damaging effect such heavy truck traffic will have on our buildings. For example, there's an older seven-story building with just seven apartments that sits four blocks away from a massive new building erected over Xavier High School. During the two-year construction of this newer high-rise, their nineteen-oh-two building shifted one and a half inches on its foundation. Engineers advised that this was just below the threshold at which major repairs to the building would be required. How will the vibrations from increased heavy truck traffic affect them? How will it affect the eighteen-fifty-two building to one side of them and the nineteen-twelve building to the other side of them? And let's not forget issues we have with our aging infrastructure. Many of our neighbors cite the significant events recently with the steam pipe that blew up on Twenty-first Street, but there are many smaller incidents that go unnoticed. A number of years ago, my own larger building from the early sixties experienced a burst water main connection on our side of the main. Our building of over three hundred shareholders had to cover and absorb a seventy thousand dollar repair. Can you imagine the financial impact to so many smaller, older buildings? Like my neighbors of seven families in just seven apartments? Or the owner occupied townhouses with just a few rental apartments so common in our neighborhood? So my question to our mayor, our city council, all elected, and all agencies involved in this project is simply: Are you going to advise all of the buildings in the area that may be affected by the MTA/DOT proposed plans to obtain engineering studies now in order to ascertain their building's current structural condition so that if they are negatively impacted by the ill-fought-out and one-sided plans proposed by the MTA/DOT, the city will promise to reimburse all of us for the cost of the damages? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Michelle Campo, who will be followed by Louis Borelllo.
I am with the Kenmare Little Italy Loop Coalition. I'm also Vice President of the Bowery Alliance of Neighbors. All the following streets mentioned in this alternate route, which goes from the Williamsburg Bridge down to Delancey, right on Allen, left on Houston, right on Lafayette, right on Eighth Street, right on Second Avenue, left on Houston, right on Allen, left on Delancey, and back over the Williamsburg Bridge, follows or wider than the Kenmare Street route. And... Sorry, I'm losing my place. And the route I have in mind has wide, less congested streets. Allen Street going north between Delancey and Houston is wide and less congested. Same is true for the westbound lane on Houston, also less residential. Most of the subway lines are located in Houston and Lafayette, FD, MN, six. It traverses all subway lines that are needed, that are asked for in this route. Lafayette between Houston and Eighth Street is wider, able to handle buses and less residential. The route laid out on Eighth Street is only one and a half blocks to Second Avenue. Eighth Street going east is wide enough for buses. It is already a bus route. All these streets mentioned are bus routes, and is in proximity of another Number Six entrance at Astor Place. Second Avenue going south is also wide enough to already have a bus route, left on Houston to Allen Street, and finally on Delancey and the Willie B. Less traffic, less residential. Also, the DOT/MTA-proposed route interferes with emergency service routes used by many vehicles, including Firehouse on Broome Street between Elizabeth and Mott, and a larger Firehouse, Number Twenty, ladder Number Twenty, and engine Number Thirteen on Lafayette Street. These are... The routes I mentioned are less trafficked, less residential, less firehouses. These are, the routes I mentioned are less trafficked, less residential, less firehouses, and it traverses all needed subway entrances. And an extremely important, though overlooked, aspect of the MTA DOT proposed route is the troublesome intersection of Bowery, Delancey, Kenmare, which because of poorly thought-out current timing of traffic lights, although it has been mentioned several times, is always congested. I live there. I've lived there most of my life. The current timing of the important turn lane light has a reverse effect on the flow of traffic. It becomes more of a non-flow. In conclusion, a traffic plan should never be drawn up from a desk. The impact cannot be seen from an office. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Campo. The next speaker is Louis Borelllo, who will be followed by Vanessa Barrios.
My name is Lou Borelllo, and I've been a resident of 13th Street between Sixth and Seventh Avenue for the past 40 years, of which for the last 10, I have been fortunate enough to be retired. I don't own a car, so for the past 10 years, I have been walking everywhere, shopping, gym, restaurants, and on occasion, I'll use public transport. As I walk, I've been observing the parking and the traffic patterns. This morning was a typical weekday on 13th Street between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, that's all I'm talking about. On the south side of the street, there's parking permitted. All the spots were taken by private vehicles, probably residents' cars. This is where the proposed bike lane and buffer will be. On the north side of the street, there is no parking, 8:00 AM to 6:00. This is where the commercial vehicles that provide the necessary services for the residents of this street drop off, pick up, some stop for five minutes, some stop for longer, but as soon as one vehicle leaves, another one takes its place. This morning, there were 10 to 15 commercial vehicles stopped on the north side of the street, a postal truck, a UPS, delivery van, a plumber's van, et cetera. Traffic on the street was moving well. If a vehicle stops in the travel lane, there is enough room right now for vehicles to go around it, unless it's a large truck and then the traffic backs up. The problem is the proposed bike lane. Wig buffer will take up more space of the narrow street than the parked cars currently do. There will not be enough room in the travel lane for other vehicles to go around the stop vehicle, and there's always going to be stop vehicles in the travel lane because of the necessary dropping off and picking up items for residences and the businesses. And we have five restaurants on that side, four restaurants. This is the one, and this is one problem on one block. Multiply this problem by the number of surrounding blocks, the increased vehicles because of the vehicle band, and you will have a parking lot and not a travel van, lane. Bike paths, pedestrian ways, et cetera, are great ideas. Save them until you're, after the repair of the tunnel. Do not constrict travel lanes with them. They're not necessary during the repair of the tunnels. The current above-ground plan will be a disaster and a folly. And if I'm right, I'm going to call it Polly's folly. Thank you.
The next speaker is Vanessa Barrios, who will be followed by Peter Davies.
Good afternoon, my name is Vanessa Barrios. I'm the Senior Associate for State Programs and Advocacy at the Regional Plan Association. Over the past two years, RPA and other prominent advocacy groups have pushed for extensive and inclusive solutions to ease the expected issues resulting from the repair of the Kenarsee Tunnels. We have followed the evolution of the MT and DOT's mitigation plan, and we commend your work. It is clear from the FTA's environmental report that the transit alternatives and street treatments proposed will make the 15-month closer of L Train stations in Manhattan an opportunity rather than a logistical nightmare, but we urge you to continue listening to the public. The upgrades to the train and ferry service, as well as station improvements proposed by MT and DOT, are a collective result of intensive research, public engagement, and vigorous advocacy. Bus priority lanes on 14th Street and the addition of one-way bicycle lanes on 12th and 13th Streets will not only benefit bus and bicycle riders, it will also help pedestrians. The FTA report confirms this with a part of the plan that will substantially improve pedestrian circulation on 14th Street. This is a real win for all parties involved. Ultimately, this closure will demonstrate to New Yorkers and the world that our transit system can improve service for all riders. The MTA recently released the Fast Forward Plan, which aims to modernize the system within 10 years. There is no doubt that future collaborations with the MTA, DOT, and all stakeholders will be needed to make this plan happen. We look forward to seeing the collective planning process ahead for future repairs and improvements throughout all five boroughs. Thank you for your time for testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Barrios. The next speaker is Peter Davies, who will be followed by James Stinnett.
Good afternoon, my name is Peter Davies, member of the Broadway Residents Coalition in Soho, and a member of the Kenmare Little Italy Loop Coalition. We understand the huge task before you, described by Andy Byford as without precedent. Our goals are, one, clarification of the plan, two, creation of the best possible temporary transportation plan that will leave, serve not only displaced L Train riders and their employers, which is the apparent focus of the SAA, but also serves residents and local businesses, particularly in the Manhattan neighborhoods nearby and impacted by the L2 and L3 shuttle bus routes. Proposed to funnel from Broad Delancey Street, six lanes wide, 90 feet wide, into far narrower Kenmare Street, two lanes wide and 41 feet wide. Both DOT and MTA have noted that the Kenmare Corridor is problematic, yet there has never been a clear explanation why the Kenmare route with a stop at Spring Street for access to the six-line Spring Street Station is even needed. As neighbors have pointed out, there is access to that six-line one-stop to the north at Broadway Lafayette, and the alternate bus routes that have been proposed will give that access as needed. So, we ask again, why is the MTA so dead-set on getting to this little tiny six-line station at Spring Street? It hasn't been answered, we ask it again. Hopefully, it will be answered at some point. Looking at the SCA, it is evident that the neighborhood along Kenmare has been given inadequate assessment, as is seen when a word search of the SCA is done, which reveals 14th Street, 155 mentions, Kenmare Street, one mention. Kenmare neighborhood is ignored. Please consider our alternative shuttle bus routes. Also, in the SCA, there is discussion of bus parking for the shuttle buses at a lot, P.A. lot at 10th Avenue and 39th Street, a couple miles north of our area. How do the buses get there? Not dealt with in the SCA. Traffic diversions through our neighborhood, which are mentioned and noted in the SCA, but not specified, not studied, not assessed. Enforcement of the Manhattan end of the Williamsburg Bridge, HOV 3. Where are they going to pull over these vehicles to enforce this? There is no space for vehicles coming into Manhattan from the bridge. There is space on the north side, I mean, on the south side going towards Brooklyn, but for cars that are coming in, there's, I've lived near this area for 40 years, we've had no enforcement of traffic on Kenmare Street. We find it hard to believe that there will now all of a sudden be enforcement of traffic moving east of Kenmare Street. Thank you very much, and we do look forward to a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Davies. The next speaker is James Stinnett, who will be followed by, it looks like Adam Garth? James Stinnett? Okay, you don't want to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. Adam Garth?
Adam Garth, resident of East 14th Streets since 1982. I also own a vehicle, which I'll, it'd be my pleasure to remove from the streets while this is going on. So my question regards contingency. There's three arches of support for this project, the MTA, the DOT, and the NYPD. Even in the best of times, they've never been terribly good at communicating with one another. And it's basically, you could line up buses from one end of 14th Street to the other with marshals, but if there's not communication between these three sections of the project, we really, you'll have nothing but confusion. So we'd like transparency there. The other is, because this is a publicly funded project, it really can't hold a candle to privately funded projects. I mean, if you go to the corner of 14th Street and Sixth Avenue, on the northeast and the northwest corner, you're going to see two footprints of, two demolitions are going to take place, leaving really two huge footprints. And my question is this, anytime you see a construction project, you see orange Yodocs taking up city streets. It's as if they have carte blanche to using the city streets for these construction projects. How, in the name of sanity, is MTA going to hold a candle to privately funded construction during this, you know, these uncharted waters that we're about to go through? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Garth. The next speaker is Susan Torak. She's not here? Not speaking? Okay. The next speaker is Ken Ettinger, who will be followed by Chelsea Yamato.
Good evening. My name is Ken Ettinger, 6D West 13th, that's between 5th and 6th. I've owned an apartment there since 1979, and as the gentleman before, I also have a car, I also have two Metro cards in my pocket, and sometimes I even use a taxi cab and Uber, which is, I guess, in many cases, the point that many people here want to talk about. How is it possible that with all the people who do all of the things, that we feel, I'm speaking for myself, of course, not for all the people here, but we need help? We need someone to listen to all of, I mean, just the people who are here, making what seem like logical comments, seem like absolutely reasonable suggestions. Nobody's getting all upset, yelling and screaming, nobody's banging the podium, and yet, it doesn't seem like on the other side of this project that people are listening in any reasonable way to what we're saying. And it's a given that the work has to be done. Nobody's arguing that. I think everybody would have to agree, this is a problem caused by Sandy? Absolutely, we want that done. But why is it that that work isn't followed by some consideration, consensus with the community? And the community isn't even all agreed here? But a lot of them are, and some of them aren't, and it seems that what the agenda of the MTA is, is the MTA and some other agendas, but not the ones of the people who live and work on, or live on, the streets that will be impacted. On 13th Street, this morning, I have a picture that I'll submit later, of a 40-foot trailer truck trying to make a turn from 5th Avenue to 13th Street, this morning. Wait a minute, it's a no-truck zone. Amazing. At 3 o'clock in the morning, often, I hear "doot, doot, doot." What is that? Well, that's somebody tooting so someone else can come out, open a door, so a delivery can be made, or other traffic goes on. So I think that the vast majority of assumptions are, as someone said, made from a desk or a piece of paper, but they're not made from life where we all live, who are here to complain. And another thing, everyone here who took the time to come out, for everyone here who is voicing their opinion, there are many, many, many more who either are embarrassed, don't have the time, don't want to, don't think their voices will be heard, don't think anything will be done, but just because people aren't here doesn't mean they're happy about this. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ettinger. The next speaker is Chelsea Yamato, who will be followed by Roberta Gelb.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Chelsea from Transportation Alternatives. I'm actually wondering, first and foremost, is there a written testimony should be submitted as well through the online portal, is that correct?
You can do both, correct.
Okay. To keep it short, I think we're all here for the best reason, which is to reduce the number of vehicles moving across the 14th Street Corridor. I'm actually really excited to hear some of the community concerns, especially in the lower east side, echoing what Transportation Alternatives has been asking for regarding the expansion of the busway to a wider berth, to have, you know, more bus priority on a typically inefficient transit line, which is the M14. We're so excited to give bus priority, signal priority for buses. I would encourage the same kind of treatment for the protected bicycle facilities coming to 12th and 13th Streets regarding giving cyclists a timing that is safe and comfortable and keeps people moving. As far as the busway goes, I've heard a lot about having installed permanent subway improvements and transit improvements during the L Train, you know, construction for the long term, but we're still wondering about those interim bus improvements. When the busways will be in place? Will we see accountability to passengers who want to roll on? At-level boarding is a very high priority for bus passengers and making sure that buses can actually move. Transfer points, I think Assembly Member Harvey Epstein put it very nicely, those connection points, and Representative Maloney as well asked about, you know, when passengers are connecting from buses to subways or buses to other points in the corridor, how will those transfer points be addressed? We're really excited to hear that there is a new division of Department of Transportation who is going to be tackling this as well. Restricting private car uses depends on a bright future for automated enforcement across the Williamsburg Bridge. We just heard more concerns about people not being able to depend on limited PD resources. How will we ensure that we can get those automated cameras to make sure that busways and high-availability vehicles are allowed to use those bridges without delay? Leave room for 24/7 busway service, we can only go up from here. And replace people-centered design with that inefficient parking. I think we're all in agreement that we can use space better and support vast bike share, city bike, namely, across the corridor as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Roberta Gelb, who will be followed by Christopher Greif.
I'd like to make a suggestion that all of you be forced to live in our neighborhoods during this process, because if you're not ready to walk in our shoes and experience what we're going to be experiencing, you don't know what's going to be going on. I live on West 16th Street, I've lived there for 41 years, I lived there when the Westside Highway exits in the Village were closed, and we were supposed to have enforcement, we have a no-truck zone, and that is not enforced. We also have the confluence of three separate police precincts, none of which want to be near us, and they come together at 14th Street and 7th Avenue. The other thing that happened to us in Chelsea is our Level 1 Trauma Center, our hospital that was serving during 9/11, is gone. So if we have a major illness, a heart attack, or something that requires immediate attention, we're going to have to get over or uptown, which means with this additional traffic, somebody very likely may die. I may be one of them. I have asthma, and I am appalled that you have not looked at the air quality. I have asthma, and I am appalled that you have not looked at the air quality. Of all the buses, 15 are electric. Do you know what that's going to do to the air quality? And when you move in to our neighborhoods, to Kenmore, to Chelsea, to the Village, when you move in, bring your families, see how you like having them. Maybe they have asthma as well. Would you like them exposed to all this additional pollution without looking at this? How dare you do this to us? We are people! We are not cars, we are not buses, we are people! And we deserve the respect from you, and we deserve you to care about our health and safety. And it is obvious to me through this whole thing that you do not. And I'd like you to make, I'd like you to think, if these were your parents, your children, your sisters, somebody who you cared about, would you do this to them without looking at the environmental impact? Shame on all of you!
Thank you, Ms. Gelb. The next speaker is Christopher Greif, who will be followed by Georgette Fleischer.
I love you, Robert. Good evening, I'm Christopher Greif, member of the New York City Transit Riders Council. I understand everyone else is yelling and screaming in the World War I battle. That's, you know, Manhattan has a really good point, but now we have to talk about Brooklyn. I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see the L1, 2, 3, and 4, but there is concern about accessibility for stops in Brooklyn. As you know, the L train at Grand Street or Graham Avenue do not have elevators. For accessible people who like to go to get off, some of them might not be thinking, and I'm not picking on them, but they all understand what I'm saying is, once they get, once they know the L is not going to be running, some of them will say, "Oh, I'll take the M train." Fine, they go off at Marcy. But there are some people who are in part of Chelsea or Italy who want to get over and maybe get on one of the L1, 2, and 3, and 4s. But the question is, are they going to stop at Marcy? Stop for connection to the J&amp;M? Since we do have that this weekend, the Loop Shuttle Bus doing that, I hope that will be added in for when it is shut down. There is a lot of accessibility concerns on the L line. As you know, in Brooklyn, the L line has the Myrtle Wyckoff and the Rockaway Parkway. Rockaway Parkway is the only ramp station, but Myrtle Wyckoff has an elevator. But if that elevator is shut, these accessible people are stuck. And the only way they have to get out is going back to Rockaway Parkway. I am very glad to see the SBS 82 bus starting up to get people to Kingsbury train stations. But before we do anything, we need to make sure that all elevators connected to the M, to the L, as well as the Q trains, which I know it's cleanest, but making sure it is running at 100% and communication needs to be worked on. Safety is very important for our accessible people. And when you all know me very well, when I mean, safety concern must comes in on the concern of all safeties. I am still very, I hope we can make clear that all electric buses will be running, and all drivers are trained on the ramps. I am a little upset with some, to one of our electoral officials, and we have to remind our officials as well, who are coming here to represent, or hear, accessibility is important to our customers. We have seniors and disabled who need to go up and down elevators or ramps to get safety. So for the record, I hope our electoral officials will really wake up and smell the coffee when we say we need accessible stations now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greif. The next speaker is Georgette Fleischer.
Hi, I'm Georgette Fleischer. I'm the president of Friends of Petrosino Square, and I'm affiliated with the Kenmare Little Italy Loop. I'm also a resident at 19 Cleveland Place, like Marna Lawrence. So I live right on Cleveland Place, just north of Kenmare, where these 48 diesel-fueled buses per hour are scheduled to be coming up the street where I live with my little daughter Augusta, who's here with me today. I want to thank Assembly Members Glick and Epstein for coming here in person and for speaking about this issue of air quality, and for speaking about the issue of air quality for those of us in the below Houston area. It's one of the things that motivated me to come out here tonight. I'm really profoundly concerned about the impact of 48 diesel-fueled buses per hour coming up Cleveland Place, past our apartment that has two windows from the living room looking out onto this collection of air pollution that's going to be created, and two-bedroom windows looking out onto this route that's going to be this collection of air pollution. I'm here because I don't want my daughter to get asthma. I don't want the daughters and the sons of my neighbors and the other members of my community to get asthma. I think that New York City needs to lead on a transportation challenge like this one. And it's impossible to be a leader on a transportation challenge like this one without taking the environmental impact very, very seriously. Please. 15 out of 200 buses is a completely unacceptable token toward environmental responsibility. Please don't be reckless on this. I think that the Kenmare Little Italy Loop has done a very good job of outlining several major ways that the impact of this plan could be mitigated. First of all, I think we need to stem the tide of unnecessary traffic that's going through from the Williamsburg Bridge to the Holland Tunnel route, that the MTA and the DOT and all of the elected representatives who care about their constituents need to put pressure on a national level, at the federal level, to reverse the toll on the Verrazano Narrows Bridge. Secondly, I think that we need to divert more than the L4 route does, that 13% is not sufficient to protect those of us that are on that route. I think that the plan that's up here on this board, which would divert a significant number of buses before we get to Kenmare Street and Cleveland Place, and that very congested area, which is, as Pete Davies rightly pointed out, is so much narrower than Delancey Street, is the second major suggestion that I think is really helpful. And there are some specific ones, but I'm running out of time, and hope that you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Deborah Greif, who will be followed by Benita Berkowitz.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Greif, and I'm going, first, I want to thank the representative from Congresswoman Maloney. It's the only one. The elected officials, reps, or persons here to talk about the ADA and accessibility. Thank God you guys are building elevators along the 14th Street corridor for the L. Thank you. We need more of them in Brooklyn. But I also want to say, I'm sick in the heart of hearing everyone, and I, before you all jump in here me, when there was repairs that had to be done to the Manhattan Bridge, and also the tunnels after Sandy, my end of Brooklyn didn't get hearings, accessibility studies, environmental studies. We didn't get that once. And yet, everyone here is complaining, "Well, you know what? 14th Street, Canal Street, those are major trends. The trucks and buses go by. They've been going on." I'm 60 years old. I remember worst pollution. I was born with asthma, so I know what it's like. And you know something? For everybody here that's angry, you go to your elected officials to complain. You show up at your community boards. You make, is it an election year for your state representatives? They're the ones who you should be yelling at, because it's their fault that there is this problem. There should be more environmental studies, but this is not their fault. At least, they did it. Try other states where the minute there's a problem, they'll just close the train line down, they choke bus lines down, a bridge line down. You get nothing. I've seen it. I am on committees where it's federal. We see New York City at least has the decency to have hearings. If you're not happy, indenuate your community board offices. Let them know. Go to your city council, drive your city council people. Keep them up, because they're the ones that are supposed to be putting money in this. And in fact, you should be requesting that more buses go up also, or into Queens, because now the New York City Health Department, in light of the buildings, are there in Long Island City, Astoria. So sad bus, find out how many people who live, who need to get there, who came from the L train, so they can get up there by buses instead of going around the loop, because the four-car G train doesn't work. So everybody's complaining, they're giving you the decency of a hearing. Because I'm going to tell you, my end of Brooklyn, we got nothing. Seven years, I couldn't go on one side of the Manhattan Bridge by train because they had to repair it. Did we have a hearing? No, we had nothing. But the minute the L train, Manhattan people complain, you guys all get the hearing. So MTA, thank you for having a hearing. I wish you did it from my end of Brooklyn. And I didn't go to you guys, because that was the previous administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greif. The next speaker is Benita Berkowitz, who will be followed by Jacqueline Denhofer.
Hi, my name is Benita Berkowitz. I'm a resident of 14th Street and a member of the 14th Street Coalition. I live in a 495-unit building that fronts 14th Street off Union Square, with no access to any street other than 14th Street. I've lived here for 40 years, along with many families and many who've lived here since the 1960s and 70s. Many of us are aging, and it's harder to navigate the streets. There are several other large residential buildings along 14th Street that also have only 14th Street access and similar populations. Imagine living here and realizing that if you're injured, you won't be able to hail a taxi in front of your house to take you to a hospital or a doctor. If your sidewalks are doubled in size and people spread out along them, how is an ambulance or a fire truck going to get to you if needed? If you have a furniture delivery, will you need to arrange it between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.? If you have a car in a garage on 14th Street, and there are many garages there, how will you get out, particularly if it needs to be used in an emergency and you can't plan the timing? How will people move in and out of apartments in those buildings? There are no delivery zones nearby in your diagrams. Imagine yourself here. Imagine walking outside and breathing in the fumes of endless buses. Did you consider all of these circumstances when drafting the SEA? While we understand that the repairs are needed, I'm only one of hundreds of thousands of residents in the neighborhoods will be impacted by and have to deal with the changes to our streets 24 hours each and every day, these dramatic changes are in effect. You've just announced that 14th Street will be closed beginning January 6th, 2019. The tunnel construction will not begin until the following April. You've said you're balancing the needs of the commuters and the residents, and yet the residents feel we haven't been heard. Please make sure that you monitor the need for the changes that you've planned and that your plans are flexible and temporary. Is such a radical change truly needed, especially in light of the lack, I can't even read this, of recent traffic data? Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Jacqueline Denhofer, who will be followed by James Harmon.
Hi. I've been a resident of Union Square, the Union Square area, for 32 years. The asbestos-covered steam pipe that exploded on Fifth Avenue between 21st and 22nd Streets was almost 100 years old. While steam is still being vented on 23rd Street three weeks after, I am often horrified at how hot the pavement feels beneath my feet while on 14th and 16th Streets. Many electric transformers have blown and been replaced in this neighborhood. I recently learned that my co-op, built in the 1950s, originally was steam-heated, then converted to oil. And when New York City mandated number six oil in buildings be eliminated in 2010, we converted to a dual pipeline with biodiesel and natural gas capability. All natural gas is fracked using a Dick Cheney's secret carcinogenic cocktail of chemicals, water, and sand. Both carbon and methane are releasing extraction, infrastructure construction, transport, and storage, and each have long-lasting afterlives. Wells and pipelines crack and leak, and natural gas is highly flammable, as we witnessed in the Rockaway fires from Sandy. The Spectra Energy Pipeline, which connects New Jersey, goes onto the Hudson River and enters New York City at Genzivort Street, was completed in 2013. Many buildings in this area are now connected to West East Pipelines, created to accommodate the Spectra-imported gas. They share an underground inhabited with heat-absorbing asbestos-covered pipes, steam pipes, all bombarded by constant vibrations from subways and street traffic above. Where are the cutter valves for this gas located in case of an explosion? I find it ironic that Con Ed uses trucks that say, "Powered by biodiesel," yet continually upgrade their fossil fuel infrastructure, while the green energy portion of my Con Ed bill is less expensive per kilowatt hour than my regular bill, which uses gas. Every night, I hear a cacophony of honking, of honking as cars are brought to a standstill while noisy, diesel-polluting, commercial garbage pickup trucks from New Jersey invade the neighborhood. How can the MTA, DOT possibly consider running diesel buses up First Avenue to 14th Street 24/7? How can the MTA, DOT ignore the fact that the Henry Hudson Parkway already has exits onto the same streets which are expected to absorb overflow traffic? How can the MT, DOT, MTA, DOT ignore the underground existent volatile heat, pipelines, and vibrations coated with thin concrete barely impervious to snow salt? I agree with Carolyn Maloney, whose solutions to the L train repair were heard at the New School meeting this spring. Have buses in Brooklyn bring people to other train locations there, and have direct destination stops to various points of Manhattan. Why not use the Queens Midtown Tunnel for express buses to specific destinations? 14th Street is merely a merger point, and this downtown neighborhood cannot accommodate more vehicular traffic, pedestrians, air, and noise pollution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is James Harmon, who will be followed by Judy Klein. Mr. Harmon?
Good evening, I'm Jim Harmon. I live on 18th Street between 6th and 7th. I, I don't envy you. I don't envy your position. It's a tough, tough seat to be sitting in, I think. I'm in the people business. I meet with a lot of people face-to-face, and I, I sat here trying to interpret the four of yours body, body language, as I sat there for the last hour. And I kind of decided that you're either very, very compassionate, or you're very rigid. And it originates from the Second Avenue subway. You went through that debacle, and it made you tougher and more compassionate. I'm not quite sure which. But, but the rhythm here seems to be anti what you're doing. There's good news. Those infamous gridlock alert days will not exist. It'll be a gridlock alert year. I had the privilege to drive on Park Avenue from 27th to 19th Street mid-afternoon, and there's two lanes either way. But there's not two lanes either way, because 60 to 80% of one of the lanes is either used for turning or for dropping people off. So you lose, you're losing 50% of the street on a regular basis. There's a, there's a fire department house on the corner of 19th and 7th Avenue. And I know that it's there because I hear them at 3:00 in the morning when they come past the apartment on 18th Street to get to an important fire. And I'm glad they're there for that service. During the day, with all the cars dropping people off and double parking, how are they going to get through 19th Street to 18th Street? How are they going to get across town? I don't think they can. There's a hospital just down the block on 7th Avenue. How will the ambulances get there? And that's it. Make the right choice. Come live in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. The next speaker is Judy Klein, who will be followed by Christine Curtis. Before Ms. Klein speaks, I would like to remind anyone who has not signed you up yet and who would like to speak, please go outside and fill out a form and register to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Judy Klein, co-president of the 100-block West 17th and 18th Streets in Manhattan. I don't have too much to add to what many others have said. You're probably tired of hearing this, but we're kind of tired of telling you. And we're not being listened to by you. This is just... This is just—I won't go on like that. We, our whole block association, is in total agreement with the concerns of the Fourteenth Street Coalition and with every other coalition and alliance that is represented here today. I'm afraid that the Flatiron Alliance is not here, unfortunately. The area of assessment of impact in your SEA does not cover my street. My street is not mentioned once, nor is 18th Street. You stop at 16th Street as being the furthest north street that could possibly be impacted by the amount of traffic that you're diverting to our streets. And I think you maybe are not aware of, have never been to the area, don't know, that 16th Street does not go through from west to east, east to west. 15th and 16th Street do not, whereas 17th through 22nd do. So, let's see. Yeah, they're blocked by Union Square. So where the 14th—17th and 18th are the first streets north of 14th, which will receive cross-town traffic diverted from 14th when you close it thoroughly. Moreover, your closure of Union Square West will force vehicles descending Broadway to turn west on 7th Street, adding to the additional traffic that we will expect. MTA provides no statistics whatsoever to substantiate your, quote, "prediction" that the side streets north of 16th Street will have a minimal increase in traffic. I mean, this is ridiculous. Your assessment is simply invalid. Our streets risk unacceptable increases in pollution, damage to structures and infrastructures, hindrances to emergency vehicles, and untold hazards for people living and working here. You know, we are also commuters. A few hours a day, maybe. Maybe even every day, a few hours a day. But we live and work on these streets 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Okay, unlike a major four-lane cross-town street, such as 14th Street, our side streets are narrow. School buses, pickup and delivery cars, and vans leave room for one lane of through-traffic only. Because of the street width, narrow sidewalks, and tall buildings, exhaust from cars and trucks, unable to move forward in the heavy traffic, cannot dissipate properly, nor can the noise. Also, these streets were designed to accommodate light traffic, not the weight and vibrations of heavy traffic. The integrity of structures and aging infrastructures is truly at risk. Your assessment is inadequate, your SEA assessment, this is inadequate. All issues need a full environmental impact study, one which includes all the side streets, north and south of 14th Street, one which includes all of the neighborhoods—
Ms. Klein, please summarize your remarks.
—which will be factually impacted. Thank you very much. There are numerous alternatives to the plan that you offer.
Thank you for your remarks.
You're very welcome. Please listen.
We are, thank you. Christine Curtis is the next speaker, followed by Robert Bottington.
Well, I am from the 15th Street Association blocks between 7th and 8th. And as a constitutional lawyer, in my own opinion, I think a lot of this amounts to government taking of property in quiet enjoyment. And very concerned about the gridlock and a minimum and maybe a hellish morass. A few specifics. On the corner of 8th and 15th, for the past half-year, Con Ed has been out about every night up until the last month trying to find a gas leak. And I've talked to the crews off and on. We have—people have talked about the infrastructure. We have gas pipes, we have water pipes, we have steam pipes with asbestos only apparently about 15 inches below the surface. So I've been continually making this plea for you all to check out the infrastructure. And that's right by Google. There's another traffic issue, which I know has been raised, which is the gathering of Uber and other vehicles to service Google. And so I don't know if that's been looked into or whether there's been any focus on the delivery vans that are around post office, FedEx, UPS, et cetera, to try to deal with grouping or time managing their deliveries, whether you've looked at 9th and 10th Avenue, peripheral space is a way to try to channel some of the traffic in some of these services. I'm very relieved that you have moved the—or planning to move the emergency vehicles to 14th Street because they just—I don't think would be able to get across 15th. I'm very concerned, as others have been, about the potential stew of air and noise pollution. And two other final things. One is that I hope that you could get some cooperation from businesses and construction projects to try to accommodate the concerns. And also, if any of this is going to become a permanent situation, I wish you'd clue us in so we could try to come up with some more ideas for you. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. The next speaker is Robert Bottington, who will be followed by Paul Mulhouser.
I lived on 100 Block of West 15th Street since 1972. I have some—I've lived on the 100 Block of West 15th Street since 1972 and have some experience about the area. I'm trying to help the MTA perhaps reconsider the basis for the estimates of 50,000 riders in Manhattan only having their destination on 14th Street. And I was pleased, finally, to find a methodology in the appendix of the SEA entitled Appendix E. 14th Street Quarter Traffic Analysis Overview dated February 22, 2018. And so, in pertinent part, the MTA bases estimates of customers on where the MetroCard is swiped first in the day, and then bases estimates of customers on where the MetroCard is swiped the next time. These estimates are supplemented by survey data and census data. And NYCT then assigns which path people use based on travel times, crowding levels, and other factors. Now, the problem is that you apparently assign—the people use the L line to get somewhere based upon these estimates without saying what other estimates are there, which may be take 10, five minutes longer, 10 minutes longer, or whatever, alternate ways of getting to 15th Street. You have the software to do that, apparently, but nothing is provided except the most extreme number of riders that will need surface transportation, as opposed to riders who can take other subway lines, particularly on the west side, to get to 14th Street. This is—this is ridiculous that you haven't looked at this way of alternate means of getting there. The second thing, though, is that you have this map. Actually, I have a large—this analysis is accompanied by this map of where the greatest number of L train riders in Manhattan—well, I will submit a written analysis since I have run out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Bottinger. The next speaker is Paul Mulhouser, who will be followed by Francis Menton. Hello, Mr. Mulhouser.
Thank you, and good evening. Paul Mulhouser, I live on 14th Street, and I'm a member of the Fourteenth Street Coalition. I'm on the steering committee. I also happen to be a product designer, and as such, I must be user-centric. I do things like failure mode and effect analysis, and I see that there's problems with this particular plan. The proposed ASP includes an array of commuter-centric services, including improvements to increased capacity on other lines, multiple interborough SBS services, HOVs, three-lanes, and ferries. The plan focuses—the plan for 14th Street portion of the ASP is focused on running new SBS services on reconfigured streetscape through an exclusive, limited-access busway. However, most properties along 14th Street only have and depend upon 14th Street for access. 14th Street also happens to be the only bi-directional cross-town street and local truck route within more than 1 1/4 miles of neighborhoods between Houston and 23rd Street. We live on an island. Everything must go and come by truck. Go and come and go by truck. The draft designs for 14th Street show single-lane constrictions on every block. Each of these is a potential bottleneck and unnecessary failure mode. Maintaining, however, maintaining the currently available four lanes, two in each direction, as on 23rd and 34th Street for the bus lanes, will eliminate the need to funnel commingled vehicles through multiple bottlenecks. With four lanes, buses have—can have their own exclusive lane. Emergency vehicles can have clear passage. The streetscape can remain flexible as MTA and DOT desire to enable services to be scaled up or scaled down as may be needed. Sidewalks. The plans call for—call to expand sidewalks by painting 10-foot of pedestrian space on both sides of the street, precariously separating lives from buses with no more than rubber stakes. We already have ample 24-foot-wide sidewalks on both sides of 14th Street. In fact, the sidewalks together are nearly as wide as the road. We don't need or want expansive pedestrian malls on 14th Street. We must instead make use of the sidewalks that we have, particularly around Union Square, where sidewalks are congested by a handful of sidewalk vendors occupying more than the 10-foot sought by expansions. Keeping pedestrians on the sidewalks enables dynamically flexible, non-constricted bus lanes. The ASP states that proposed actions will result in substantial improvements in overall travel times compared with the no-action alternative. A more successful implementation is likely achievable with a more thought-out plan somewhere between do-nothing and a constricted two-lane busway. Thank you. I will follow by sending a copy of this along with some diagrams.
Thank you, Mr. Mulhouser. I would like to once again remind anyone, if they'd like to speak tonight, please go outside and register. The next speaker is Francis Menton. I'm sorry, the next speaker is David Marcus.
I'm a member of the 14th Street Coalition on the steering committee. I'm on the West 113th Block Association and also a board member of my co-op on the corner of 13th and 7th. What I did was cull some of the language from the supplemental environmental assessment, and I just want to comment on the snippets that I pulled out. Balanced against needs of residents in the vicinity. We don't think so. Significant analysis and public outreach. We've asked for the analysis. The public outreach has been nothing more—this is what we're going to do. We'll listen to what you suggest, but we're going to do what we want to do anyway. The fact that you would state in this that it would not result in any significant adverse environmental impact flies in the face of everything that you can witness in terms of everything we're talking about. The congestion, the noise, the pollution. The objective of the assessment is to provide transit and mobility options to L train riders to the greatest extent possible, and then balanced against the needs of the residents in the vicinity. We think the balance is so imbalanced, and it could be better, and we've suggested ways to make it better. The purpose of the supplemental environmental analysis was to measure the alternative service plan versus no action. Well, you know, I know of no business evaluation that does my-way-or-the-highway kind of analysis. There has to be something in between that you need to consider. And the fact that we have come up with what we think is a very cogent plan, but it's do-nothing or do-it-our-way, and that kind of flies in the face of a collaborative process, and it's frankly not good business management where I come from. Environmental impact summary makes blanket statements without actual data and relies on questionable modeling. There's been no actual count of actual traffic, nor did it analyze the impact on 11th, 17th, and 20th Streets. Absent real traffic data makes the conclusion that there is no increased pollution, no increased noise, and no increase in vibration. Those are baseless claims absent any real observations, and again, fly in the face of what we observe as residents on a daily basis. No discussion on effect on ambulances, fire trucks, sanitation pickups, et cetera. There's no discussion on how trucks will be kept off the residential side streets. There's no basis for the assumption that more people will crowd to 14th Street, given that there's no L train to get them there. And as far as the population of Manhattan that's going to be using that—I know I live not too far from there, and the last thing I would want to do is get on a bus that's going to be stuck in traffic or walk through a herd of people. There are many other side streets that I would opt to walk on where I could walk faster than trying to fight 14th Street. So—and I think most people would be like me. There's no room on the narrow side streets for protected bike lanes, particularly during a time when DOT projects a 50% traffic increase on the side streets. Makes no sense. The beneficial temporary impact on air quality defies logic. 70 diesel buses an hour, traffic backed up, and idling on the side streets, and the study reveals that we're actually going to see a decrease in pollution. I mean intuitively, I don't know who's going to buy into that one. And it's not backed up with any real data. Somebody made it up. No effect to historic buildings or infrastructure? I will remind you of what just happened on Fifth Avenue and 19th Street, and it's not the first time. 15th Street has had two of those. We've had very old and delicate infrastructure buried in these side streets. 14th Street itself was reconstructed to protect those things. And now you want to take that kind of traffic and put it on the side streets, where these fragile foundations of buildings and pipes and steam are all vulnerable, and they're exploding right as we speak. The ASP is better than no action at all. I might actually concede that. However, I'm finished. I would concede that it's better than no action at all. But you know what? It comes up real short when you think of what the alternatives are that would make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. The next speaker is Neil Goodwin. Very much, Mr. Goodwin. I apologize.
No problem.
Please proceed.
The study seems to revolve around an analysis of what optimizes the travel time of the MTA's customers' car— of the MTA's customers currently riding the L-Train. Given what I would... The question I'd like to ask is, given that the population of Manhattan exceeds by a factor of 25 the people that ride the L-Train, what study was done to determine that the travel time optimizations that you were creating for L-Train riders didn't result in longer delays for more people elsewhere? The MTA is also proposing to turn not just Fourteenth Street into a busway, but to reduce the travel lanes in order to provide a... A convenience buffer or safety bussler for bus riders. This concern seems rather abrupt, given that dangerous crowding on subway platforms has yet to be addressed in many decades on the subways. And to me, it seems one more illustration of how the conclusions of the plan seem to be what might otherwise... That what might be looked at as a radical experiment in social engineering that forces people to not have the option of access to a vehicle or a private vehicle for any reason. The issue of safety, which has been brought up by so many people, and which in fact, the bike lanes, as I would like to expand on in a written presentation, create... Not only don't make the cyclists safer, but increase the dangers to everyone else that's in the vicinity of the bike lane. I would like to just refer to one of the guidelines for a federal... A guidebook for using safety as a project prioritization. Projects should increase the safety of the transportation system. It is not enough to simply consider, in quotes, "safety" in the planning process. And most certainly, they should not degrade safety, even if they have a primary preference other than safety. The focus on optimizing the experience of people displaced from the L-Train by not running the L-Train at all for two years is, it seems to me, the only priority around which the entire plan is created, and then every other consideration and every other person, every other element of infrastructure in New York is subordinated towards that plan and insufficiently researched. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. The next speaker is Karen Reynolds, who will be followed by Susan Williams.
Hi. I am so happy that you're giving us the opportunity to speak with you directly. I did not s...
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, I'm Karen Reynolds. Thank you. I did not know that this meeting was going to happen today, and I just found out about it early this morning. So I'm not as fully prepared as I would like to be. But there are... I have many concerns. I've spoken publicly before about my concerns that the ADA-compliant elevator on the corner of Avenue A is not in fact going to be ADA-compliant because it's going to be on a traffic island. And I question how that can make it ADA-compliant. It's right next to a service road that runs parallel with Fourteenth Street, and it's my understanding from speaking with two people... To management in Stuyvesant Town, which is where I live, that that section of the service road is not needed for their needs, and that the service road is in fact owned by the city. I know that at some meetings, some people from MTA and DOT weren't sure of who owned that road, but it's in fact owned by the city. So my proposal is that you extend the traffic island out to the sidewalk on the north side of Fourteenth Street and Avenue A, which would make it safer for those who need to use wheelchairs, strollers, et cetera, when getting off the elevator so that they can go up to First Avenue, and which is where they really would want to go. And the elevator is currently positioned or by design to face east, and that would put them right in the pedestrian pathways when they're trying to cross from Fourteenth Street, Avenue A, from the north side to the south side, and from the south side to the north side. And if the elevator is facing west, then with a wider pedestrian walkway, then it's going to be safer for them to get off and go to First Avenue. And one other issue is that the sidewalk on the north side is very narrow. So... And I don't know exactly what your plans are, but if you widen it, it will end up being right under people's bedroom windows, and I don't think that that's really your intent. So that's an additional reason why I think the pedestrian walkway would be a better plan than what is currently proposed. If it's left the way it is, people will get off. They'll have to go across the pedestrian... They'll have to go across the service road and have to deal with vehicle traffic and bicycles before they can get to the other side of that service road. So that's one of my concerns that I've mentioned many times, and I certainly hope that steps are being taken to rectify that. I feel it's a very serious issue in terms of safety. And another issue is the buses that you have coming from Brooklyn that are coming... That are going to be coming over the bridge and coming down Houston Street. Then they're going, as I understand it, turn on First Avenue and will terminate at Fifteenth Street, which absolutely makes no sense at all. I don't under... Why would anyone do such a thing? It's going to put them in the middle of nowhere. They're going to have to fight for bus resources to go further west if they want to go to Union Square or Eighth Avenue, whatever. It just doesn't make any sense at all, and they also have to cross the street if they want to take the First Avenue bus to go up. It would seem to me it would make much more sense to have many different stops along Houston Street so that people can get off at, say, First Avenue and either go downtown to City Hall, for example, or uptown, and they could use the bus. And then if you had another stop at Sixth Avenue, which would have...
Please summarize your remarks.
Well, I have a lot of concerns, and as I mentioned, I'm not as fully prepared as I would like to be, but those are the two most important things. I have one more concern, though, and that's that I was very sick during the month of July. You can still hear that my voice is not well. And it's... There's a possibility that it may be due to all the construction that I have to deal with because I'm right on the corner of Fourteenth Street and Avenue A, and I'm one building back. And I was essentially bedridden for two weeks, and I hope that that's not an indicator that other people are going to get as sick as I did. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. The next speaker is Susan Williams. I would also like to remind anyone, if they still like to speak, to please go outside and register to speak. Thank you. I'm sorry. What did you say? Sure. Susan Williams is Susan Williams here. Larry Aronson, followed by Janet Charleston.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to make some remarks. My name is Larry Aronson. I live on Twentieth Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenues. I'm a member of the Flatiron Alliance, and I'm here partially on behalf of Susan Finley, who could not make it. I'm going to be reading from some of her remarks and adding a few of my own. "The MTA's SEA does not accurately reflect the scope or impact of their plan on narrow residential streets in at least five historic neighborhoods. The MTA doc claims their SEA is sufficient for them to proceed with their redesign of Fourteenth Street. Yet their SEA does not reflect the scope of or environmental impact the diversion of traffic from Fourteenth Street onto narrow side streets will have in historic landmark neighborhoods north of Fourteenth Street, including Union Square, Flatiron's historic Lady Miles District, the Chelsea Historic District, Gramercy Park, and I'm going to add to Susan's list, the 200... The Pre-Revolutionary War Cemetery on Twenty-first and Sixth Avenue, and the federally-owned historic landmark for Teddy Roosevelt's birthplace on Twentieth Street, not to mention the Players Club and other historic buildings around Gramercy Park. The MTA study claimed that north of Fourteenth Street would be diverted from Fifth through... To Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, and they acknowledge that the crosstown traffic on Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street..." Oh, they neglected to acknowledge, as anybody can see on the map, that these streets are blocked by Union Square, that other streets are blocked by Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village. North of Twenty-third Street, you have Madison Square and FIT blocking things. This leaves Twentieth Street and Twenty-first Street as the only continually accessible streets that go almost from river to river. Twentieth Street is two-way between Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village. For the same reason, there are many services running under this street, including the steam pipe, which just exploded a few weeks ago. I testified at a city council hearing on this subject, predicting or talking about the possibility of this will happen. I have been through two of these before, one of which in, I believe, in 1990... Well, I forget the dates, but one of them killed three people, and the second one took out several blocks from one side of the building to the curb on the other. Our streets are not meant for this. And besides this, the... We're poorly policed. My precinct is the 20... Is the Thirteenth Precinct on Twenty-first Street and First Avenue. And there's a great deal of difficulty now getting emergency vehicles, ambulances, any kind of service vehicle through our streets. And yet, there's little enforcement. Trucks are not supposed to use our streets as thoroughfare, but Fresh Direct parks two or three trucks in a row on Twentieth Street every evening to start servicing deliveries in the neighborhood. Do they get ticketed for this activity? No. Anyway, I see my time is almost up. I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Aronson. The next speaker is Janet Charleston, who will be followed by Christopher Gottfried.
Hi. I'm Janet Charleston. I'm a 30-year resident of the 100 block of West Fifteenth Street and member of the 100, 200 West Fifteenth Street Block Association. I feel like many of my concerns have already been clearly presented by other speakers, so I just would like to add my voice to the weight of these issues that they've brought up. And for the last many, many months, I've attended many meetings, many public events, where these same concerns have been brought up over and over. And it feels sometimes to me like we're being allowed to vent rather than that our concerns are actually being considered in what's being planned. And I... I hope that this hearing is not that. Let's see. I... So some of the things that I'm concerned about and surprised about, one is the January 6th closure of Fourteenth Street for a busway. I so far have not heard the reasons why that's happening so early and why it's necessary, and why we would be subjected to three more months of an already difficult situation. I'm concerned about the diesel buses and the constant flow and gridlock. I just witnessed it on my way down here on Broadway, bus after bus after bus after bus, nobody moving, cacophony of noise and fumes. That's what I see happening on Fourteenth Street when it's still not even clear how many people really are going to be needing those buses. It's not clear to me from the data I've heard that you guys even know. It's a guess. And for these changes to be made permanently and structurally on Fourteenth Street seems like the wrong way to go. I'm concerned about the side streets that are one-lane residential streets that are not structurally able to handle the weight of the traffic. I'm concerned about the air quality, the noise, the impact. Also, I'm questioning what... If this plan goes through, what you mean by enforcement? Does that mean you're going to send people to monitor the honking, the illegal truck traffic? I've already been working with CB4 and the Thirteenth Precinct off and on since 2014 about just these things. The problem is steadily increased, and there's been no monitoring. Are you really prepared for the manpower and money it's going to take to have people out there protecting the residents 15 hours a day? Let's see. I think I'd also like you to really consider some of the suggestions that I've heard from the Fourteenth Street Coalition, things that they brought up that don't make sense in the plan, and suggestions that they've brought up in... Instead of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Christopher Gottfried, who will be followed by Omar Vera.
Good afternoon. I happened on this. I didn't really plan to speak, but I am a community psychologist at Pace University, and I happen to live along the J&amp;Z line, which is going to be affected by this. And I come to public hearings somewhat often, but not too frequently. I just had some suggestions based on what I've been hearing, and it seems that there are a lot of folks who are actually doing good citizen-scientist kind of work in terms of what they think or what people believe is going to... Are going to be the effects of this... Of this... Of the shutdown. And I've read the reports, and I kind of wonder what happens to that citizen-scientist data. Folks are providing really good qualitative data, and I'd want to encourage actually to give folks to actually include more of that kind of data. It would actually, I think, help improve the process. In addition, I guess I'd say that I hear lots of voices, but I actually don't hear some of the very voices that I see every day on my commute into the area. I live in an area that now has... Where I see lots of underrepresented folks that are not here. I would... I don't think they actually make it to these hearings. I would encourage getting their... Their feedback on this. I watched this happen on the M-Train reconstruction, and I was impressed by how many people who take the subway regularly who just didn't know what was going on, who needed whose opinion would have been or whose perception would have been important. Again, my apologies. I'm not greatly prepared for this, but again, I would just encourage greater data use. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Omar Vera, who will be followed by Arthur Schwartz.
Good evening, everybody, or good afternoon. I just found out about this meeting actually two hours ago when I was eating at Mo's while watching New York One. But there you go. Today, I'm actually quite impressed because starting this weekend, the MTA is making the first weekend preparations for the eventual Canarsie Tunnel rehabilitation next April. So of course, though, per the service, there will just be a shuttle between Broadway Junction, Eastern Parkway, and Canarsie. And I feel that this is the right way to go regarding the subway service. Now, regarding Fourteenth Street in Manhattan, we know that 50,000 travelers use the L-Train just within the borough. Now, I recommended that if you're going to create the new M-14 SBS, that eventually, all three routes should be SBS. The A, the D, and then the one that's being created should be called the L to honor the Canarsie Line. And therefore, two can serve south of the Fourteenth Street area and the east side, and the other one, the newest one, should serve north of it. Therefore, we have three L... Sorry, three M-14 lines. And yeah, that's the way to go. And also, I mentioned this before, but thanks again for adding Hughes Street as part of the auto-system transfer. After all, the Broadway station is actually closer to Hughes than it is to Lormer, but now from both stations, the JM customers will have... Will have two choices, which station want to use to transfer to the G. And last but not least, I reiterate support for creating a temporary auto-system transfer between the Eighth Avenue stop and the Sixth and Seventh Avenue stops because of course, you know, the... Though the L- you know, the, though the L will be shut down in Manhattan, the, the island platform of Sixth Avenue has to remain open for transfers between the F and M and the 1, 2, and 3. You can't, you can't close that. So, I, at least the customers will see the empty station. But, yeah. All is well, that's all I have to say, and I'll keep moving forward following all the news regarding the L, L-Train shutdown. This has to be done, just like we did with the M. Thank you so much, and I'll see you around soon.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. The next speaker is Arthur Schwartz.
Although I am counsel to the 14th Street Coalition, I speak here today as a resident of West 12th Street in Manhattan, whose windows are at street level and two floors up, and who has two young children whose bedroom windows are three floors above street level. I start from an even more personal level. In January of last year, I woke up one morning and knew that I was having a heart attack. I went one block east, one block west to our standalone emergency room where St. Vincent's used to stand, and right away I was told that I was going by ambulance to Beth Israel Hospital on the east side. I was strapped in and the ambulance headed downtown. I yelled out, "Why are you going south?" The EMT replied, "Too much traffic on West 12th Street." This was a Saturday morning at 9:00 AM. I have tried hard to understand the SEA's traffic analysis, which concludes based on some AIMSOM network outputs that the shutdown of 14th Street to normal traffic and the elimination of two lanes of traffic will not result, and the widening of the sidewalks, will not result in an appreciable increase of traffic going across 12th Street, 13th Street, 15th Street, and 16th Street. Note, there's no discussion of 17th to 21st Streets, which are through Streets, which 15th and 16th are not. AIMSOM did modeling and arrived at some analysis which it, which it warned needed to be adjusted in real time. There was no real-time study of the traffic or the actual count of cars done in connection with this SEA. No real plan other than an oblique reference to police enforcing the law, which would mean police on every single corner of Seventh Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, stopping vehicle, trucks from turning down residential streets or turning up, from uptown and downtown directions from where they were headed. There's no discussion about the explosion of four higher vehicles in our community, the use of which will increase with the shutdown. All conclusions about noise, pollution, vibrations flow out of these numbers. Most importantly, the SEA does not address the alternative plans advanced by representatives of the community, much of which you've heard about today. Without such analysis, the SEA is not a true EA, whether measured on DNEPA or CICRA. And I want to add one last point. Not in the SEA, but on the MTA website, there is a drawing for the first time of the bike lanes that they want to put in on 12th and 13th Streets, including right in front of my house. It leaves eight feet for parking on one side and 11 feet for cars and 15 feet for the bike lane. Right now, cars can pull over so that a second car can go by. 11 feet will not allow enough space. So, every taxi, every person unloading groceries, every oil delivery, and every garbage truck will cause a backup in traffic. None of this was studied or discussed in the SEA. That is one of its failures. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Schwartz. Is there anyone in the room who registered to speak, whose name I have not called? At this time, we have run out of registered speakers. We, we will, we will go into a shorter adjournment awaiting any other speakers. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, again. I would just like to, if everyone can either take their seats or-- I would just like to ask one more time if there are anyone else in the room who would like to speak. If there's no one here who would like to speak, I would just like to remind everyone that you can submit written comments online by, through August 19th, and you can mail us comments postmarked by August 19th. With that said, the time is now 7:36, and this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank you very much, everyone, for coming out tonight.